Praise the Lord, dear brothers and sisters.
जय नेविल चांद सुंदर
Yes, it is truly a great joy and a privilege to be found in the company of God's people with you today.
एकदम ये सत्य प्रकारले ये साचने सुभागिको पुरो अनंतको पुरो के प्रभुको जनरुक माझना आजाद भिपाई रहेछु.
And I want to tell you that I am fully convinced that this is the Lord's doing.
एकदम इतनी प्रकारले एकदम जस्तै मान राजीचुप्ति यो ची परमेश्वरको काम हो निकिन.
From the time that this meeting had been planned, we have seen that there had been many challenges to hinder this meeting to come to pass like this today.
जब दिखिन् यो संगति हुने योजना बनी थाहा दिखिन् यानिरा धेरै प्रकारको भादा भिग्न हुरु आयो, आपणि आजको यो दिन समान प्रभुलाई अमिला दियो नुरुदायो.
Starting off with the reluctance to grant visa for me to come here.
सबमत्त सुर्वातमा ची मेरो नित्यचुन्छ विजा तियो तियो दिखिन् सुरु आयो.
And then there are many other challenges.
तस्कुपछात धेरै चेवर चुनौती हुर्थियो.
And just few days before I left, I had my own family challenges. My mother fell quite ill.
के दिन अवगणि अजय अर्वा मेरो नित्य चुनौती आयो, के यानिरा अनुमंद अवगणि बिरामा बिराम भियो.
And there was so much happening that for a moment it seemed that this is not going to work out.
एति भिग्न यानिरा चुनौतीलु आयो की एक सनमाता मुलाई इस्तलाकी तियो अब सेकर भुन सफ्डिन अपनिकिन.
But I want to assure you today that this meeting, this special meetings, this season of meetings has been ordained by the Lord, purposed by the Lord.
आजको दिन तपालायो आश्वसन दिना चाहन्छु की यो जुन्छ शेवकायो यो ची परमेश्वरदाराने रचियो हो र परमेश्वरदाराने इसलाई हो माले बनाए यो को सिर्फ आयो.
It has been my personal practice and principle when I get an invitation to pray and ask the Lord to give me a promise.
किना मने यो मेरो एकदम व्यक्ति कर्छु, आउपनि हो र मो व्यक्ति करुप्ले यो पनि गादछु. जब जब मुलाई कुनै सेवाहिकलिन्ति निमंत्रण आदियो आचा, मो चर्व प्रथम परमेश्वर सिद्ध प्रार्थना कर्छु र माहासिदाने मो प्रतिकार मान्छु.
So when dear brother approached me with this invitation, I looked to the Lord and said, "Lord, unless you give me a promise, I am not going to go forward in this."
प्रिया दासुबाय दिदी बनियो, यो सुर्वातमा यानिरा माहाले मुलाई निमंत्रण दिनुहर्छ पर तस्कुपछात नहि तुलन्ति पछात मुलेको प्रवेश सिद्ध प्रार्थना गरे की प्रभु जब समा तवाले मुलाई यो स्पेशन प्रतिकार दिनुहुन्न, तवा समा मो जान सफ्डिन अपनिकिन.
So it was after the Lord gave me some guidance and assurance that this is the will of the Lord and this thing is coming from the Lord, I gave the okay to brother.
तस्कुपछात परमेश्वरले मुलाई एकदम आश्वसन दिनुहर्छ की यो कुरो ची परमेश्वर बटन यो आयोको भोभनि गएन, तस्कुपछात मुलेको ब्रदरलाई फिरितनि कोण्टैक गरे.
And then, starting from there, though the hindrances came, though challenges came, one thing I knew, God had promised and he will fulfill his promise.
सुरु दिखिन् दिखिन् दिलिगना अले समान उनसक्षय धेरै प्रकारको भादा भिग्न हुरु, धेरै प्रकारको चुनौती र आयो. तर मुलाई परमेश्वर भाति पूरा भरसातियो की यो परमेश्वरको काम हो र परमेश्वरको कामलाई कोसले भिन्न रोक्न सफ्डिन.
Though the situations have been challenging.
उनसक्ता परिस्थिति और एकदम चुनौती पुर्वक थियो.
Though there was so much of stress and a lot of mental disturbances happening.
उनसक्षय त्यानिरा धेरै प्रकारको मानसिकतना और पनि थियो.
The promise of the Lord kept me going and has enabled me to be in your presence today.
परमेश्वरको प्रतिकारले मुलाई एकदम भिड़िया मुमें सायता गणुभयो अर आजको दिन तपालको उपस्थितिको लेकिन कारण भयो.
So dear brothers and sisters, at the very beginning, what I want to tell you is, please remember that this gathering is purposed by the Lord and the Lord is going to be in our midst and work in our midst.
प्रिया दासुबाय दिदी बनियो, यो शेवको सुर्वातमा मोतबाला एउडा पुरो आश्वसन दिना चाहन्छु की यो जुन्छ शेवकायो यो ची प्रभु बटा आयोक हो र प्रभु लेके घरी यो को सिर्फ आयो.
So you must be found in this place with that assurance, with that mindset. Yes, the Lord is in our midst and the Lord is going to work in our midst.
इसकारनले गर्दै तब जमयानिरा शेवमा अनुभवेक्छ, यो पुरा मनमा तबाले एकदम आश्वसित भर बस्नुहोस की यो शेवकायोमा ची प्रभुको उपस्थितिपनि छ र प्रभुले तवाला यो शेवकायो द्वारा आशीषित कर्नुहो.
So I'm going to take just a couple of more minutes to just to introduce myself to you to those of you who do not know me.
मो के समय लिङ्छु तबर सिद्ध, ताकि जो जस्तै मुलाई चिन्देन, जान्देन, गुनाता मो मेरो विषयमा परिचय दियो चाहन्छु.
I believe that those of you who do not know me knows brother Nevil Chahsundera well.
तबर मध्यमा जस्तै मुलाई चिन्देन, उनसक्षय तबाले ब्रदर नेविल चांद रंगाल चिन्द हुन्छ अवध.
Yes, and I served the Lord together with brother Nevil Chahsundera as an elder at the Christian Fellowship Centre in Colombo.
गलो मो मो देखो क्रिस्टन जुन्छ फिलोप्सिस सेंटर छ, तिनिलाई ची मो नेविल भाईजी समान संगति समय गरिको हो.
In my young age, I was a very wayward person. I was into all the sinful things that a young person can do.
जब जवानीको अस्तमा मो एकदम आपरहि जीवनमा थियो र एउडा जवान मनिष्ठ जुन्न प्रकारले एउडा पापमा जीवन व्यक्तित्व गादछ यसू प्रकारको जीवनमा थियो.
And in the year 1997, the Lord touched my life and completely transformed my life and I came to know the Lord Jesus.
1997 मा परमेश्वरले मेरो घिदेल छुनुभयो र मुलाई सम्पूर्ण प्रकारले वाले एकदम बद्दिनुभयो र मो प्रभुमा आयो.
And then, as time went on, in the year 2002, the Lord called me out for full-time ministry so that I gave up all thoughts and ideas of employment and I came for the Lord's service.
जो समय आयो, जो वर्ष अच्छि 2002को वर्ष हो, जब मुलेको सम्पूर्ण प्रकारले आफले आफले प्रभुको सेवाहिकलिन्ति अपन गरे.
So 2022 is a very important year for me.
अब यो 2022 यो ची मेरो नित्य महत्वपूर्ण वर्ष हो.
Because in the month of May, I celebrated 25 years of coming to know the Lord as the savior of my life.
मुहिको जुन्छ यो 2022मा ची मुलेको प्रभुमा आयोको 25 वर्षको जुन्छ उत्सव छ की मुलेको मनायो.
And in this year, in the month of February, I celebrated 20 years in the ministry serving the Lord full-time.
यही वर्ष जुन्छ फेवरीको महिना छ, तेति वेला मुलेको प्रभुलाई ची एकदम सम्पूर्ण प्रकारले सेवाहिकलिन्ति 20 वर्षको उत्सव मनायो.
And to this very day, I do not regret none of those decisions that I made for the Lord.
आजको यो दिन समा मुलेको प्रभुको नित्य जुन्छु निमेलिये मेरो जीवनमा, क्यों पुनेपनि निमेलियोको मुलाई आजु आजु समय पुनेपनि प्रकारको दुख र खेब बन्ने चाहिन.
So I'm married and my wife's name is Buula.
मो ब्यागरिक हो, मेरो पत्नीको नाम ची ब्युला हो.
I have a 11-year-old daughter, Shakayna.
मेरो एकाना वर्षको छोरी छ, जस्तो नाम ची शखाइना हो.
So we are living in the church compound and we serve the Lord together with brother Nevil and his family.
हामी ची मण्डीको भित्राने बस्द छौ, हाम्रो जुन्छ ब्रदर नेविल छ, वापस साथ नुमिला हामी संगति बस्छौ.
So I covered your prayers on behalf of me and my family that we may be able to serve the Lord faithfully till the very end.
यसको तब सबैलाई निवेदन गर्न चाहन्छु की मेरो र मेरो परिवारको नित्य तबकि मेरो त प्रार्थना याद कर्नुहोस ताकि यो जुन्छ जीवनको अन्तसमा हामी ची प्रभुको सेवाहिकलिन्ति रह्न सकू.
So I think that is enough about me and anything else you may get to know me during the coming days.
यो ची नगरख्यालमा आइलिन्ति परार्त छ, र आउने लगिन और मा फिरितनि तबाले केकुरी अले अजय बेसी गर्गेन, मेरो विषयमा तबाले जान्नुहो.
And one more thing I need to tell you that when you come and introduce yourself to me, you will tell me your name, but be very sure that the next moment I will forget your name.
एक एउडा पुरै ची तवाले एकदम आश्वसन गर्न राख्नुहोस की जब तबाले मो समा भेट्नु आउन होन्छ, तवाले आपुन नाम मुलाई भन्न होन्छ, अर के सन पछात मो तावक नाम फिरिति आह्छ.
It takes a little while for me to register names in my mind. So anytime you introduce me and the next moment you speak to me and I ask, "But your name is?" Please don't get offended.
किना मने तवाले मुलाई नाम भन्नुहोस, मो आपुन मनमा तबको नाम याद गर्न राख्नुची धेरै मुलाई गारो कर्दछ किना मो केक सन पछि नहि आह्छ, अर यसको तबर एकदम यो विषयमा ची मनमा दुखम हो.
Okay, now before we look into the study, just as we said, all of you who raised your bibles up and sang the choruses, the Bible choruses.
यसको हामी वचन मान गण्यमंद अवगणि हामी यानिरा बाइबल माती उठायेकन, यो जुन्छ बाइबल चोरसमले लिखिन.
And as I looked around, I saw almost every one of you had a bible in your hand.
मुलेको यानिरा चारै पिटा पोपटी जब एरे, मुलेको देखि सबैको हातमा बाइबल थियो.
But now I'm going to ask you a question.
आपुन मो तवाले एउडा प्रश्न गर्न चाहन्छु.
Not a Bible question.
बाइबलको प्रश्न हैन.
Now if I ask you to raise your bible in your right hand and a notebook in your left hand, will you have a notebook or a piece of paper to show in your other hand?
यदि मुलेको तबाला भने, तबको दायने हातमा तवाले बफ्कर त साथ बाइबल दिनुहोस अर अर्को हातमा तवाले नोट लिख्ने जुन्छ खादा सबके लिनुहोस बनिकन, दुईटा हातु गम भने, तबको केक छातियो.
Will you have, will you have your bible in one hand and the other hand a notebook or a piece of paper?
के तर गुमा एक हातमा बाइबल र अर्को हातमा एउडा नोटबुक छ.
Yes, I think you should have it.
मुलाई लाग्छ, तर गुमा एकदम अनिवार्य हो.
Okay, and also would you have a pen in your purse or your pocket or your bag or somewhere?
साथ जाग तबर गुमा पेन पनि होला, तबको पकेटमा, तबको बैगमा या पुने जगमा.
Okay, now we are going to do an exercise.
अब हामी एउडा एकमा एक्सरसाइज गर्न्छ.
Can you show me your bibles, everybody? Put your bibles up.
के तबाले सबैले आपनो बाइबल देखून सक्नुहोन्छ.
Let me see, I want to see, yes, everybody.
मो देख्न चाहन्छु.
Young and old, okay, good, right, I can see a little small boy there also raising the bible, good.
सानु केटले पनि बाइबल उखाड्यो.
Okay, now, can you show me your notebook now? I don't have a notebook because I don't keep notes when I preach.
तर के तबाले आपुन नोटबुक देखून सक्नुहोन्छ, मेरो मुहिरा.
अब, अब, अब.
किना मने मो प्रचार गर्दा केरी नोटबुक राखिन.
Notebook, notebook.
एकदम माती आपुन वस्ता पले हात देखून.
Okay, right, so those of you who do not have a notebook.
तब मध्यमा जस्तै मुलेको नोटबुक छैन.
Now what are you going to do?
अब तबाले केक गर्न होन्छ.
Those who have a notebook, love your friend or your enemy and give one piece of paper to them.
जस्तै माती नोटबुक छ, उनारु तबको साथीहोस या तबको दुष्मनहोस, तु वराता वेले एउडा पेपर दिनुहोस.
Okay, now how many of you have a pen with you? Do you have a pen?
तबार कोमा खतिजाना कोमा पेन छ.
अब, अब, अब. Pen, everybody.
सबाले पेन देखून हो.
Anyone who doesn't have a pen, I can share my pen, but you will have to return it to me after the meeting.
जस्तै कस्तै मुलेको पेन छैन, बने, मेरो पेन लानुहोस, तर शेवाहिक पछात तवाले फारगायो दिनुहोस.
Yes, okay, right, good. Now why I said that was.
यो किना मुलेको भने?
Just as you listen to the word of God, it is very important that you take down notes.
किना मने जब तवाले परमेश्वरको पत्न सुन्न होन्छ, यो एकदम महत्वपूर्ण छ की तवाले तिसको नोट पनि बनाउन पछाओ.
We are going to do a very systematic, orderly study on our theme, Matthew 6:33.
किना मने हामी ची जुन्छ हाम्रो थिम छो मतिरचिसुसमाचार छको 30 पत्ति इसलाई ची हामी एकदम राम समाले प्रमाणुसार हामीलाई अध्ययन गर्न्छौ.
And the matters that we would discuss would be like a study, one by one, point by point. Under every heading there will be some points and some points, so that would be the flow. I want you to get that flow properly.
जुन्न विषयलिगन हामी मनन गरिन गर्न गएरहेछु, केची एकदम प्रमाणुसार हुनेछ अर एकदम तिसको अलग-अलग भागनुसार हामी ची तिसमा मनन गर्न्छौ, यसको तबाले तेलाई नोट गर्न राख्नु एकदम होसक्छ.
So whether you are young or old, I encourage you strongly, please take down notes in whatever language you are comfortable in, please take down notes.
यसको तबाले जवानहोस या बुढ़ाहोस, तवाले मो निवेदन गर्न चाहन्छु, तबाले ची नोटची निचिन गरेर तवाले लेप्न होस.
But make sure you take down notes because sometime during the lunch break I might come and say, "Can you show me your notes?"
तबाले निचे गर्न होस की नोटची तवाले बनाउन होस, किना उनसक्षय यो खाना खाना गिलाउन, दियोस लाउन्स टाइममा मो तवाले आयोग नसोछु की तवको नोट्स मुलाई दिखाउन होस निकिन.
Okay, so that's all. So now we are going to read the precious word of God and we are going to meditate his word.
यो सक्ता अब हामी परमेश्वरको वचन पढ्ने छौ, र इसमा मनन गर्न्छौ.
So we are going to read from Matthew chapter 6.
हामी मतिरचिसुसमाचार छाह देखिन पढ्ने छौ.
Matthew chapter 6, we are going to read from verse 31 to verse 34 please.
यसको 31 पत्ति दिखिन लिखिन, 34 पत्ति समा हामी पढ्ने छौ.
Matthew chapter 6, verse 31 to 34, we are all going to read together.
मतिरचिसुसमाचार छाको 31 दिखिन लिखिन, 34 पत्ति समा हामी सबै जाना मिलिन पढ्ने छौ.
Okay, can we start? Let my dear brother start so that you can join.
इसकारन हामी केक होन, हामी केक कियोन, वहामी केक पहिरो होन बन्दे, की मेरो तिक्रिन गरा किना के हामी जाति अर्थ यो यो सबै धोखोको कोच कर्दछन, किना की तिमी हलाई यो सबै धोखोको खाचो छ बनी ताकि मेरो कसोरके किताले जान्नुहोन्छ, तर पहिले परमेश्वरको राज्य रोमा कुद्धार्मितको कोची गरा तर यो सबै धोखोको तिमी हलाई खापि निछ, इसकारन भोलिका नित्य कित्ति नगरा किना की भोलिको तिन्द्रय आपनी धोखरुका नित्य कित्ति गर्न्छ, आजको खराबी आजक्त नित्य प्रशस्त छ.
Dear brothers and sisters, we have been led by the Lord to meditate on Matthew chapter 6, verse 33 in particular.
प्रिया दासुबाय दिदी बनियो, परमेश्वरदारा हामीलाई ची निदेश गरियो पछाओ की हामी ची विषयस्थ गरिन, मतिरचिसुसमाचार छको 31 मात्रे अध्ययन गरू.
A fragment of that verse, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God."
यो जुन्छ पोछा इसको भाग, तर पहिला सर्वराज्यको कोची गरा.
To those of us who read the Bible, this verse is a very familiar verse.
हामी जो जस्तै बक्त साथ मनन गादछ, यो जुन्छ पोछा हामीले परिरह्छ.
We quote it just as the way we want.
हामीले जुन्न प्रकारले भयो पनि यो जुन्छ प्रतिकारलाई.
But dear brothers and sisters, this simple verse brings before us a very profound message.
प्रिया, प्रिया, अरुहो, यो जुन्छ एकदम साधन दिखापन जुन्छ पोछा, एसची धेरै धुरा रास्य हामीलाई दिखाउनुस्.
The first reading of this verse, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God", will convey the very meaning of that verse.
यो जुन्छ पोछा सुर्वातमा पहिले परमेश्वरको राज्यको जुन्छ कोची गरा बन्नी, इसलाई धेरै कुरा हामीलाई बताउनुस्.
That word, "first", "seek ye first" will give us the total meaning of that verse.
यो जुन्छ पहिले जुन्छ पुरो छ, तर पहिले यो जुन्छ कोची गरा बन्ने जुन्छ पुरो छ, इसलाई ची यो सारा पत्तो विषय हामीलाई.
It can be very easily and simply understood that this word speaks to us of the things that we need to give importance in our life.
यो जुन्छ पोछा इसलाई हामीलाई ची, हामीले हाम्रो जीवनमा दिनु पढ्ने जुन्छ कुरो अर्को महत्वपूर्ण होता छ, इसलाई बताउनुस्.
It speaks to us of the things that we need to give prominence in our lives.
यो कुरोले हामीले जुन्छ आपनो जीवनमा दिने जुन्छ सर्व जुन्छ उत्सव, सर्व उत्सव माराकनी कुरोलाई बताउनुस्.
In other words, we can say this speaks to us of the priorities in life.
अर्क सबमा भने, हाम्रो जीवनमा हामीले दिनु पढ्ने जुन्छ सबमत्त अगिल्यो स्थानको विषयमा बताउनुस्.
So dear brothers and sisters, as we consider this theme, Matthew 6:33, actually what we are going to consider is the priorities of our lives.
प्रिया दासुबाय दिदी बनियो, मतिरचिसुसमाचार छाको 30मा ची हामीले ची हाम्रो जुन्छ यो पोथले ची हामीले ची हामीले जीवनमा दिनु पढ्ने जुन्छ सर्वप्रथम पूरा अर्चक्ति कुरोलाई बताउनुस्.
When we look at the context in which this verse is said, we find that the people had missed the priority in their lives.
यो पोथमा ची हामीले यो बड़ा वैडको केपुछा, बने, मानीसरले ची आपनो जीवनमा कुन कुरोलाई छ, अवगणि राख्नु पनि ची कुरोलाई बिसिगेग्.
We find that the people who were around the Lord Jesus were not giving importance, the due place to the things that needed importance in their lives.
हामीले देवकसोकी बारीसरले, साजिचन र ले, प्रभु ची क्रिस्लाइज जुन्न प्रकारको महत्वपूर्ण आपनो जीवनमा दिनु पढ्ने ची दिये कसैन.
But they were worried about the day-to-day matters of life.
उनारु आपनो जीवनको जुन्छ चिता तिक्रिले भरिए पछाओ.
What shall we eat? What shall we drink?
हामी केक खाने छौ, केक कियुन नैछौ.
What shall we bear?
हामी केक लाउन नैछौ.
What shall we do?
हामी केक गर्न नैछौ.
Now these were the things that the people were concerned about.
यो कुरो अर्को नित्य नित्य मोहानीसरले एकदम चिति तरान्छ.
And in this chapter, we find in this preceding verses, the Lord Jesus is explaining, "This is needed for everyone."
यानिरा हामीले तुची यो जुन्छ अध्यायमा ची प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले आफले भनिन रहेछ, की यो कुरो अर्का हामीलाई खाचो छ बनिकन.
In fact, the Lord Jesus is saying, "Your heavenly Father knows that you have need of all these things."
सत्य प्रकारले प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले यो पनि भनिन रहिनु भएछ, कितिमीलाई सौद्य पिताला थाहा छ, कितिमीलाई यो सबै कुरोको खाचो छ.
Though all these things are essential in our lives.
उनसक्ता यो सबै कुरो अर्क हाम्रो जीवनमा एकदम महत्वपूर्ण छ.
The Lord Jesus Christ was making a very important point there.
प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले यानिरा महत्वपूर्ण अकुरो बताइ रहेछ.
See the way that verse begins.
यन्नोस्को प्रकारले यो पोथ सुरु हुन्दछ.
Now in English it says, "but..."
यानिरा इंग्लिशमा ची "but" पनेर बनिछ, जस्तो अर्कता रहो. इसिद्याम, तर, तर, तर. इंडिपलीज, तर.
Okay, so you find the Lord Jesus having explained that generally people are looking for their food and their lodging and their clothing and all these day-to-day things, he's saying, "But I want to tell you something."
प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले तिमानीसरलाई देखिन रहेको ची, की तिमानीसरची एकदम आपुन दिनोको खाने, पियुनको पुरो पर्विसयमा लिगन अर अर्क लाउन नै पुरो अर्क पिसायो लिगन, उनारु तिसको पीछे लागि रहेको अस्तमा प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले देख्दा उनारुले भनुभयो तर तर यो कुरो अर्क भाईपनि.
No, Jesus is saying, "Yes, these are essentials in life."
प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले भनि रहेछ, हान, यो जीवनमा खाचो पढ्ने कुरो हो.
"But..."
तर.
"Seek ye first the kingdom of God."
पहिले परमेश्वरको राज्यको कोची गरा.
And what does he continue with?
तस्कुपछात माहाले निरत्तमा की भनुभयो.
Then all these things will be added to you.
सबै धोखोको तिमी हमलाई थापि निछ.
See the way the Lord Jesus puts this formula together, this equation together.
यन्नोस्को प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले कसिरी ची यो दुईटा जुन्छ 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 जुडायो छ, यो फर्मुला छल्ला जोडिरेछ.
The Lord Jesus is saying, "You seek the kingdom of God first."
प्रभुसुक्रिस्ले भनि रहेछ, तिमीले पहिला सर्वराज्यको कोची गरा.
There are all these things that you are looking for will come to you.
तस्कुपछात तिमीले हेरि रहेको, यो सबै जुन्छ धोखोको छ, यो तिमीला नित्य हुनेछ.
But what were the people doing?
तर तिमीले केक गरिरहेक्यो.
They were seeking all the things that they need.
उनारुले आफले आफले खाचो परेको, तिस सबै कुरो अर्क कोची रहेक्यो.
And they didn't have room and time for God.
तर अर्कमा पर परमेश्वरको नित्य समय पनि थियन, जगा पनि थियन.
So as we look into this verse, this verse speaks to us of the priorities in our lives.
जब हामी यो पोथलाई पढ्नछ, यो पोथलाची पोथलाची हामीलाई हाम्रो जीवनमा दिनु पढ्ने प्रथम स्थानमा बताउनुस्.
The due place that we need to give for God and the things of God in our lives.
हाम्रो जीवनमा हामीले परमेश्वरलाई दिनु पढ्ने जुन्छ जगा छ, र परमेश्वरको स्थानलाई ची हामीले हेर्नु पछाओ.
Dear brothers and sisters, in these next couple of days and sessions, what we are going to discuss is to see what are the priorities in our lives.
प्रिया दासुबाय दिदी बनियो, यो अनुवेला जुन्छ दुई दिनमा ची, दुई दिन दिनमा ची हामीची केहामी छौ बनिची हाम्रो जीवनमा ची जुन्छ सर्व प्रथम कुरा हामीले ची सब, सब अवगणि ची कुन कुरोलाई राखेको छ.
What are the things that we need to give importance in our lives?
हाम्रो जीवनमा ची हामीले ची कुन कुरो अलाई ची महत्वपूर्ण होता दिनु पढ्ने हो.
So our study is going to be of seven parts.
र हाम्रो जुन्छी मनन छ, किछी सात वड़ा भातमा हुनेछ
So now what is our theme?
र हाम्रो जुन्छी थीम किच्छे छ
Now you need to start writing.
र आवत अवले लेख्नु हो
What is the theme?
र हाम्रो जुन्छी थीम किच्छे छ
Matthew six thirty-three.
मत्तीरची सुसमचार छक्को तेतीस
But seek ye first the kingdom of God, only that phrase.
र पहिले परमेश्वरको राज्यको खोजिकर
Now how are we going to learn or explain that theme?
र यो कुरो यो जुन्छी थीम छ, इसलाई कसिरिछी हैमिले बनन गर्ने छ
So the heading is going to be the seven priorities in life.
र तारा यानि राहु, हेडिंग जुन्छी छ, तिरुस्को सिरसक्छे, हाम्रो जीवनमा हुनु पनि सात वड़ा जुन्छी सबन्दा अगाडि राख्नु पन्ने कुरो हुरु
The seven priorities in life.
र हाम्रो जुन्छी जीवनमा सात वड़ा निचिप्रथममा राख्ने कुरो हुरु
Now when I say seven priorities, you may think, okay, then the first is important, second is a little like that it goes down, down and the seventh is the last and the least.
र जब मैले यो सात वड़ा जुन्छी प्रमुक्ताको बिस्तमा जब मैले पुरा गर्द छू, तेथि बेला यस्तो नवपिचार नौला, की पहिलो च, असल मध्ये एकमै, महत्वपूर्ण दोस्तै एकन्ते बन्दा कम्ति तेस्तो कम्ति तेस्तो हैन
No, no, all these seven priorities are equally precious, equally important, equally valuable.
हैन, हैन, यो सबै जतिपनि सात वड़ा जुन्छी प्रमुक्ताको कुरो छ, यो सबै एकदुसरा एकदम बराबरी प्रकारले महत्वपूर्ण छ
It is like a seven faceted, a seven sided diamond.
यो ची सात कुनि भएको वड़ा जुन्छी हीरा जस्तो हो
Have you seen diamonds?
के तबाले हीरा देख्नु भएक्छ
I thought these ladies might love to have the diamond.
दिदीबनी अर्ले छ, यो डायमंड च एकमै मनपर होस
Now diamonds are very precious.
यो जुन्छी हीरा छ, एकमै बहुमली हुन्छ
And you find the diamonds are nicely cut and polished and it has various facets.
र हामी जब देख्द छू, की यो जुन्छी डायमंड छ, हीरा छ, एकला एकमै काटिकन, छाटिकन, एकमै देर प्रकारको कुना रुबाहेक
Now the diamond that we are going to hold today is the diamond called the priorities of life.
र आजको दिन जुन्छी हीरा हैमिले थाम्न गइरहेको छ, एलाजी बन्छ जीवनको प्रमुक्ताको
And when you look at that, it has seven sides, seven facets.
र जब हामी यसलाई हेर्द छू, इसमा च सात वड़ा कुनारु छ
Every facet is equally precious, equally valuable, equally important.
र हरेक जुन्छी कुना छ, एकदमै, एकदमै, एकदमै इक्वली जुन्छी छ, एकदमै समानता पुर्वक एकदुसरा मिल्दा छ, र एकदमै महत्वपूर्ण छ
And none of these seven priorities is second to the one that is preceding it.
र इसमा जुन्छी यो सात वड़ा मध्यम, कुनै पनि जुन्छी प्रमुक्ताको कुरो छ, त एकदुसरा दिन कम छैन
So all seven priorities are in the same level.
र यो जुन्छी सात वड़ा जुन्छी प्रमुक्ताको कुरो छ, त सबै एवड़ै स्थानमा छ
Okay, so now did you understand our structure?
र के तबाले हाम्रो जुन्छी, यो जुन्छी, यो इसको बनावट रहेको देख्नु भएक्छ
Matthew six thirty-three is the theme verse.
मत्तीरची सुसमचार छक्को तेतीसी हाम्रो थीम वस
We are going to look at it in under the heading, the seven priorities in life.
र यानि र हामी यो पत्लाची, हामी यो सात वड़ा जुन्छी जीवनको प्रमुक्ताको कुरोमा लिग्न रहेन छ
And how are these priorities placed?
र यो प्रमुक्ताकुरोर कसिरी राखिन्छ
It is like a seven faceted diamond.
र यो ची सात वड़ा कुना भएको हीरा जस्तो हो
Okay, now we are moving to the first one.
र आवो हामी पहिलो कुरोमा जाने छ
What is the first priority in our lives?
र हाम्रो जीवनमा सबन्दा पहिलो प्रमुक्ताको कुरो के हो
Matthew chapter one and verse twenty-one.
मत्तीरची सुसमचार एक को एकाइस पर
Now I am going to get all of you to read this.
र आवो मोहत अवले सबैले यो पढेको छान्छू
Matthew chapter one verse twenty-one, the sisters are going to read.
र यो जिन्ही र आवो मत्तीरची सुसमचार एक को एकाइस पर दिदीबनी अर्ले पढ्ने छ
After that, I am going to give another verse that the brothers are going to read.
र त इसको बचार मोह अर्को पात दिनेछु, त्याची हाय अर्ले पढ्ने छ
Okay, so we are going to start, right? Now there is going to be a competition between the brothers and the sisters.
र आवो हामी सुरु गर्ने छ, यो ची दासबाई, दिदीबनी, रुमातमा यो ची एउना कम्पटिशन हुनेछ
Usually in other assemblies, I see the sister's side is more and the brother's side is very less.
नर्मली मैले हेरेबनी, अरु मण्डली अरुमा, दिदीबनी अरुको जुन्छी स्थान छ, त्याची एकदम बेसी हुन्छ, र दासबाई को कम्ति हुन्छ
But today I see more brothers and less number of sisters.
र आजची मोह यानि र देरै दासबाईले देखिरहेक्छु, र दिदीबनी कम्ति छ
Okay, but we will see who is going to read better.
र हामी हेर्न छ, अपस्थले छ, एकदम असल प्रकारले मनन गर्न
Okay, over to you sisters, Matthew chapter one verse twenty-one.
मत्तीरची सुसमचार एक को एकाइस पर
Yes, yeah, very quite softly, very piously reading, right?
त वर्ले छ, एकदमै सांत प्रकारले पढ्नु भए
Maybe sometimes they might be a little louder at home, no?
र उन्हें सक्साह धर्मा के समय उनार रहेको, उच्चस्वरमा बोल्छ अहला
Okay, right. Matthew one twenty-one we read, now we are going to read Luke chapter nineteen and verse ten, brothers.
लुकारची सुसमचार उन्नाइस को दस पर पढ्ने छ
Luke nineteen ten, brothers are going to read.
र लुका उन्नाइस को दस पर, दासबाई अर्ले पढ्ने छ
All together please, all brothers.
एक साथ एक साथ मिलिगन
Okay, good, so the first priority in our life is the Savior. Now mark my words, the Savior.
र आवो हाम्रो जीवनको सबन्दा पहिलो प्रमुक्त, प्रमुक्ताको कुरोचीको हेर्ची हो हामिला बचाउनेवाला
Dear brothers and sisters, if there is anything that needs to take the first place in our lives, it has to be the Lord Jesus as the Savior of our lives.
र प्रिया दासबाई, दिदीबनी अरु, यदि रहेको, कुनै पनि यस्तो पुरा चाल्चल्ले हाम्रो जीवनमा प्रमुक्ता दिनु पन्ने हो, बने, यो ची प्रभु सुखरिस्ट भएक, अरु कोई पनि हैन, जो की हाम्रो जीवनको बचाउनेवाला र उदार कर्तव्य छ
Our whole dealings with God, our relationship with God, all begins there.
त किन्नो बने, हाम्रो संपूर्ण प्रकारको परमेश्वरको सातमा जुन्छी लेन देन छ, जुन्छी सम्बंध छ, त्याची प्रभु सुखरिस्ट गारण इशुहुद
When we talk of priority and prominence, it means giving the due place.
र जब हामीले जुन्छी यो प्रमुक्ताको कुरा बल्ला छू, सर्व एकदम उच्चको कुरा बल्ला छू, यो ची माले दिनु पन्ने कुरो हो
The due place for the Lord Jesus Christ is to be the Savior of your soul and my soul.
र प्रभु सुखरिस्टको जुन्छी एकदमै प्रमुक्ताको कुरो, र वाले पाउने कुरोची यही हो, की वहाँची तबैर, हाम्रो जुन्छी आत्मको बचाउनेवाला
That is what we read in Matthew chapter one verse twenty-one.
र यही कुरोची हामिले मत्तीरची सुसमचार एक को एकाइस परमा परेक
When the angel appeared to Mary and told, "You will bear a son." What shall you call him? You shall call his name Jesus. Why? Why? Can you read it and tell me? Why did she say? Why did, why did the angel tell Mary to call him Jesus?
यानि र दूतले आएगन, उस्ताव बने, कितिमीले एउडा पुत्र जन्माने छ, त्यो तिमीले वहाँको नाम हिषु राख्नु बनिगन वाले किनारै इस्त्रो राख्नु लागि बनियो
Yes, I need an answer, please speak up.
र माले उत्तर चाहिँ तबाले भन्नु हो
Yes, for he shall save his people from their sins.
किन्नो बने, वाले अपना जनरलाई किन्हल्का पाप और बड़ा मुक्त गर्न हुनेछ
That is the meaning of the name Jesus.
त यही ची हिषुको अर्थ हो
His name means he is the Savior, he will save his people from their sin.
र किसको अर्थ यो हो, की वहाँची मुक्ति दाता हुनु छ, र वाले छ, आपनो लोग भर्ला, अपनाको पाप बड़ा मुक्त गराउन
And that is who he truly is.
र वहाँची यो वही हुनु छ, सत्य प्रकारले
Today people, if you ask, if you go out to the world, or maybe even the so-called Christians, they know, who is Jesus?
र आजको दिन यदि तबी संसारमा जानु भए बने, यो नामधारी कृष्चरुर्गोमा बने, गर्न तवाले सोच्नु भए बने, की हिषुको बिस्तमा उनारले बनेछ, कोई हिषुची कोहो बनिगन
He will say, "He is a good man."
र उनारले बनेछ, हिषुचै असल मानिस्तु हुन्छ
He was a righteous man who lived upon this earth.
र वहाँची यो संसारमा रहेको एउडा धर्मी मानिस्तु हुन्छ
He was a miracle worker.
र वाले अचमको काम कर्ने वाला हुन्छ
He was a healer.
वाले चंगाय कर्ता हुन्छ
He is the one who said, "If anyone slaps you on one cheek, give the other cheek."
र वाले ने बनु भएको, कसिरी तिम्रो एउडा गाला, थपड़ाने गल्ला, अर्को गाला, ठप दिनु
Maybe even people might say, "He is the one who was crucified on a cross."
र कति मानिसरले बन्दा छ, वाला वही हुनु छ, जो की कर्व कलबरी कुस्ना एकदम टाङ्गिनु भएको
Yes, all that is true about the Lord Jesus.
र यी सबै कुरो प्रभु सुखरिस्टको बारेमा सत्य हो
But actually, who the, who is the Lord Jesus truly?
र असल प्रकारले छ, प्रभु सुखरिस्टको हुनु छ
He is the Savior, the one who can save us from our sins.
वहाँची हुनु छ, मुक्ति दाता, वाला इस्तार जस्तेछ, हामिला हाम्रो पाप बड़ा मुक्ति दिनु
So if he is the Savior, then you and I need to give that due place as Savior to him in our lives.
र यदि वहाँ मुक्ति दाता हुनु हुन्छ, बने, हामिले रत्ताबले छ, वाला दिनु परेको जुन्छी स्थान छ, हाम्रो जीवनमा त्याची हामिले वाला दिनु बचाउ
In Luke chapter nineteen verse ten, the Lord Jesus himself said like this.
र लुकारची सुसमचार उन्नाइस को दस परमा, प्रभु सुखरिस्टले आफै यो कुरोला बन्नु भए
The Son of Man has come to seek and to save that which was lost.
किन्नो बने, मानिस्तको पुत्र, हरायो, हरुलाई खोज्ना, र मुक्त गर्ना आयोको
So dear brothers and sisters, the Lord Jesus should be given that due place as the Savior of our lives.
र प्रिया दासबाई, दिदीबनी अरु, प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई च, एउडा मुक्ति दाता, हाम्रो जीवनको मुक्ति दाता हो, बने, वाला दिनु पन्ने स्थान छ, हामी आपको जीवनमा दिनु पर्छ
If you do not know the Lord Jesus as the Savior of your life, that means you do not know him at all.
र यदि तबाले प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई आपनो जीवनको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा चिन्नु हुन्न, बने, इसर्का तबाले प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई पुनि निकिलिछिन्नु हुन्न
If you do not know him as the Savior and make him the priority as the Savior of your life, we cannot continue in this subject of talking about the priorities in life.
र यदि तबाले प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई आपनो जीवनको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा, र वाला एउडा एकदमै सर्वो छ, अब आपनो हितमा जागा दिनु भएक्छ, छैन, बने, यो जुन्छी हाम्रो बचन मनन छ, यो अगाडि बडार
Dear Dear brothers, young and old, brothers and sisters, do you know the Lord Jesus as the Savior of your life?
र प्रिया दासबाई, दिदीबनी अरु, जवान, गुरु, सबै, के तबाले प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई आप तबैको जीवनको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा चिन्नु हुन्छ
Have you made the Lord Jesus the priority of your life?
के तबाले प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई आपनो जीवनको प्रमुक्ता दिनु भएक्छ
Have you given him the due place as the Savior of your life?
के तबैको जीवनको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा, वाले दिनु पन्ने स्थान तबाले दिनु भएक्छ
And this morning, I want to give you three reasons to make him the Savior of your life.
र आजको यो बेनिपका, मोतबाला तीनो वड़ा कारण दिनेछु, जस्तेछ, तबाला, प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई च, तबैको जीवनको मुक्ति दाता पराउन
So under the first priority, the Savior, we are going to look at three reasons to make him the Savior of our lives.
र यो जुन्छी मुक्ति दाता छ, इसको मनि पनि तीनो वड़ा हमो कारण हुर्तबाला बताउन छ, जस्त कारणले लिगन, हामिले छ, वालाँची, हाम्रो जीवनको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा दिख्न सक्छू
Number one.
पहिलो कुरो
He is the exclusive Savior, the only Savior, exclusive Savior.
वहाँची केवल, केवल एवड़ै मात्रै बचाउनेवाला यो मुक्ति दाता हुन्छ
Acts chapter four verse twelve.
प्रियी, चार को दस पर
Acts chapter four verse twelve, shall they all read together please?
प्रियी, चार को दस पर, हामी सबै जन्म मिलिगन पढाउ
Dear brothers and sisters, we have lots, a lot of material to cover, so you need to be very quick in turning your bibles and reading the passages, otherwise, you may not only have to spend three days, but you may have to spend the whole week here.
र प्रिया दासबाई, दिदीबनी अरु, तबाले च, आपको जुन्छी बतन, बतन छ, यो बन्ने बितिके पढ्नु हो, पुरंत बन्नु हो, किन्नो बने, हाम्रो वटीन दिन छ, तर आपको यो कुरो, पुरा बनुलाई, यो कुरो भसने लाग्न सक्छ
So Acts chapter four verse twelve, shall we all read together please?
चार को बार पर, हामी सबै जन्म मिलिगन पढाउ, नाता अर्क गसे नामस्पीत, किन्नो बने, सर्वमुनि मानिसरको बीचमा, अर्कुनै नान की छैन, जस्तराम
And John chapter fourteen verse six, John chapter fourteen verse six.
योन्ना चौधको छपत पनि
Shall we read please?
अनोस अक्कर, हिषुले तिनाई बनु भए, भातो सत्यर जीवन मनै, मोदालातायो, कोई पनि पिताका अहु भएन
So the first reason to make the Lord Jesus the priority, the Savior of your life is, he is an exclusive Savior.
र पहिलो जुन्छी कारण, जो जुन्छ कारणले लिगन, हामिले छ, प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई आपनो जीवनको मुक्ति दाता बनुनु बचाउ, त्याची यो हो, की वहाँची केवल मात्रै एवड़ै मुक्ति दाता हुनु छ
That means the two verses that we read very clearly tells us that there is salvation in nothing else.
किन्नो बने, यो जुन्छी दुईटा पत्त, हामिले पढ्यो, यो पत्तले हामिले बताउन छ, की वहाँभएको अरु कहाई पनि उदार छैन
There is no other Savior in this world.
र यो संसारमा वहाँभएको अरु कोई पनि मुक्ति दाता छैन
He is the only Savior.
वाला केवल मात्रै एउडा मुक्ति दाता हुनु छ
He is the only way of salvation.
र वहाँची केवल एवड़ै पातो मुक्तिको निक्त
He is the truth.
र वहाँची सत्य हुनु छ
He is the way.
वाला मार्ग हुनु छ
He is the life.
र वहाँची जीवन हुनु छ
There is no other person in this world.
र संसारमा अर्कुनै मानि छैन
There is no other thing in this world.
संसारमा अर्कुनै थोक छैन
There is nothing in this world that can bring salvation to you and me.
र यो संसारमा इस्तो कुनै अर्कुरो छैन, जस्तेछ, तबैर मेरो निची उदार लेउन छ
It is the Lord Jesus Christ and Him alone.
यो ची केवल प्रभु सुखरिस्ट वाला मात्रै हुन्छ
He is a unique Savior.
र वहाँची एकदमै विशेष प्रकारको
He is the one and only Savior.
वाला केवल एवड़ै मात्रै बचाउनेवाला
Dear brothers, can throw all the information that you can find.
र तबाले प्रिया दासबाई, तबालको भएको, सबै प्रकारको जुन्छी कुरो रजक्यै तबालकोमा होला
Today they say you can find anything on Google.
र आजको दिन बन्दा छ, Googleमा तबाले सबै कुरो भेट्नु सक्छ
Yes, go to Google and find.
र Googleको भएन, खोज्नु हो
Go anywhere and find.
र चाहिँ पनि गर्न, तबाले खोज्नु हो
There is no one who died for the sins of mankind.
र तर तारा के निर्णय, कोई पनि मानिस्तको पाप को निम्ति माने छैन
Only the Lord Jesus died for the sins of man.
केवल प्रभु सुखरिस्ट मानिस्तको पाप को निम्ति मानु भए
There have been so many so-called religious leaders in this world.
यो संसारमा देरै धर्म गुरु अरु आयो
There have been great philosophers in this world.
यो संसारमा देरै विचारकुर पनि आयो
There have been so many people who said, "Okay, I can show you some way of salvation."
र तेरे र कति मानिसर आयो, तिनारे बने, हाँ ठिक्छ, मोतबाला, मुक्तिको के भाग्यो त्या कौस
There have been some who have said, "Okay, I will tell you the way of salvation."
र कति जन्म इस्तो आयो, उनारले बने, मोतबाला, मुक्तिको पातो बताउन छु, बनिगन
But no one ever said, "I am that way of salvation."
र कसले पनि, काहिले पनि बनेन, मोची उदारको बाटो बनिगन
The Lord Jesus Christ alone made that exclusive statement and said, "I am the way, the truth and the life. No man comes to the Father but by me."
र यानि र प्रभु सुखरिस्टले मात्रै यो विशेष कुरा वाले, आप्तै मुक्तिवाले यो कुरोला बनु भए, की मोची, जुन्छी भातो र सत्य, मोनै हु, र मो भएको र कोई पनि, मेरो पिताका अहु सब्दिन बनिगन
Dear brothers and sisters, that is why this morning I want to encourage you to know the Lord Jesus, to give Him the priority place in your life as the Savior of your life.
र यसँका प्रिया दासबाई, दिदीबनी अरु, आजको यो बेनिपका, मोतबाले समयलाई, प्रोत्साहन दिन जान्छू, की तबाले छ, प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई च, आपनो जीवनमा मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा चिन्नु हो, बनिगन
Because he is the exclusive Savior, he is the one and only unique Savior.
किन्नो बने, वहाँची एउडा विशेष प्रकारको मुक्ति दाता, एकदमै केवल एवड़ै मुक्ति दाता हुनु छ
Is there anyone here who does not know the Lord Jesus as the Savior of your life yet?
र के यानि र तबाले मध्यम, कोई साझन जस्तै, प्रभु सुखरिस्टलाई तबाको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा चिन्नु भएक्छ
Dear brothers and sisters, I do not know you.
र प्रिया दासबाई, दिदीबनी, मोतबाला चिन्दीन
But the Lord Jesus knows each one of you and your heart.
र प्रभु सुखरिस्टले तबालो, मध्यम, हरेकलाई को हितलाई बिर्चिन्न छ
You may show yourself to be a believer.
तबाले उन्हों सक्साह, आपलाई विश्वासी भरण देखायो, नु भएको लाग
You may be coming here regularly for meetings.
तर निरंतर यानि सेकल निम्ति आएन, बन्नु
You may be involved in all the activities that this gathering does.
र यो जुन्छी सवामो भएको, सबै प्रकारको काममा तबाले आपलाई, आपलाई सम्लप्न गर्नु भएको लाग
But do you know the Lord Jesus in a personal way?
तर के तबाले आपनु व्यक्तिकता रूपले प्रभु
Do you know the Lord Jesus as the Savior of your life?
के तबालो जीवनको मुक्ति दाता को रूपमा चिन्नु हुन्छ
Have you given the Lord Jesus that important priority first place as the Savior of your soul? The Lord Jesus is reminding you today to do that. Because he is the exclusive savior. He is the one and only savior. And today you need to believe in him. And the second reason, to make the Lord Jesus your savior and the priority of your life. John chapter three verse sixteen. It's a very familiar verse, John three sixteen, let us all read together please. And John chapter three verse sixteen, let us all read together please. And the second reason, to make the Lord Jesus your savior and the priority of your life. And John chapter four verse forty-two, John four forty-two. Shall we read together please, John four forty-two. There we find that the Lord Jesus is not only the exclusive savior, but secondly he is also everyone's savior. John three sixteen says, God so loved the world and gave his only begotten son, he is the savior of the whole world and mankind. Yes dear brothers and sisters, the Lord Jesus is everyone's savior, he can be anyone's savior. Though the Lord Jesus is an exclusive, unique, the one and only savior, His salvation is not exclusive. But his salvation belongs to all. For God love the world and gave his only begotten son. And if anyone is willing to believe on that son, that person can be saved. Yes dear brothers and sisters, that is the reason that you need to believe in the Lord Jesus this day. Because he can be your savior today. You can never say no, as the Lord will not be my savior. The Lord will not accept me. Oh, he is only the savior of the Christians. He is the savior of the churchgoers. He is that savior only of that group and this group. No dear brothers and sisters, he is everyone's savior. He can be your savior as well. Are you willing to make the Lord Jesus your savior? Dear brothers and sisters, just take a look at your own heart and life, and ask this question, do I know the Lord Jesus as my savior? He is the savior of the world. But the most important question this morning is, the Lord Jesus the savior of your life? You can go everywhere saying, Jesus is the savior of the world. But can you honestly truthfully say before God, yes, Jesus is the savior of my life, my savior? He is willing to make you his child and become your savior. So once again, I encourage you dear brother dear sister. Make the Lord Jesus the priority in your life. Make him the savior of your life. Because he is the only savior in this world. Because he is everyone's savior, he can be your savior today. There is a wonderful chorus in English. I am not going to sing it because I don't, I can't sing. It is no secret what God can do. What he has done for others, he can do for you. I don't know whether you have heard this chorus in English. And it is a very old, very famous chorus. Yes, it is no secret what the Lord Jesus can do. What he has done in the lives of others, he can do for you today. If you are not saved this morning, if you cannot truthfully say, yes, Jesus is my savior, then this morning, the Lord is speaking to you dear friend. This message is for you dear sister, this message is for you dear brother. You have not come here by chance. But God brought you here this morning. So that you can hear his word. And you can believe in the Lord Jesus to be your savior. Are you willing to do that? The Bible says, today is the day of salvation. Now is the acceptable time. Two Corinthians six two tells us that, today is the day of salvation. Now is the acceptable time enough. Dear brother dear sister, are you willing to surrender your life to the Lord Jesus? Are you willing to say, yes, Lord Jesus, I am a sinner, I need you to be the savior of my life? And are you willing to give the Lord Jesus that prominent priority place of being the savior of your life? So the first priority is to make the Lord Jesus the savior of your life, so the savior is the first priority. Why should you make him the priority, the savior of your life? Because he is the exclusive savior. And number two, he is everyone's savior. And number three, he is the effectual savior. He is the savior who can do things for you. He is the powerful savior. He is the almighty savior. Hebrews chapter seven. Verse twenty-five please. Hebrews seven twenty-five. Okay now, I expected all of you to read, but only my brother is reading, and I think maybe you all are going or gone to sleep or something. Okay, shall we read Hebrews seven twenty-five, all together loud and clear? Yes, there it says that he is able to save to the uttermost. That means he is able to save the utmost the worst sinner to the uttermost to the end. Let us read another verse before I explain. One Timothy chapter one verse fifteen. One Timothy one fifteen. All together please. They are positive, possibly saying, Christ Jesus came to this world to save sinners, of whom I am the chiefest sinner, the greatest sinner. That means no matter whatever sinner you can be, the Lord Jesus is powerful to save you. Don't matter how far you have gone away from God. No matter how deep you have sunk in your sin. No matter how bad you are in your life. Maybe others around you say that you are, you, you have no return. Maybe people around would look at you and say, here, look here dear friend, there is no life for you, you just forget about you, die in your sin. Maybe looking at your own life, you may wonder, oh, I am such a richard sinner, there is no way out for me out of this mess. What does the Bible say? That he is able to save the chiefest of sinners. Dear brother dear sister, this morning while you are seated here listening to these verses, these words, do you feel convicted like that? Do you feel, I am an ungodish sinner? Like the prodigal son, I have gone far, far away from God. There is no return for me. I have nothing good in me. No one can help me. Neither can I help my own self. Dear brother dear sister, are you feeling like that today this morning? If you feel like that, then the Lord Jesus is telling you, he is that effectual savior, that mighty savior who can save you from no matter what your condition is. Isaiah chapter forty-five and verse twenty-two please. Shall we all read together? Forty-five twenty-two Isaiah. There we find, God is saying, look unto me and be saved, or turn towards me and be saved. Tell me, tell me the answer. Yes, I want others also to say everybody. All the ends of the earth. So no matter where you may be. Whether you are in Qatar. Whether you are in America. Whether you are in Japan. Whether you are in India. Whether you are in Sri Lanka. Whether you are in Australia. Or whether you are in Somalia. Wherever you are. When you turn to the Lord, he is able to save you. That is the reason dear brother dear sister, you need to make the Lord Jesus the savior of your life. He is an effectual savior. No sinner is two worse than sinner that the Lord Jesus cannot save. But the Lord Jesus can save anyone and everyone. So this morning, dear brothers and sisters, make the Lord Jesus the priority of your life as the savior of your life. If you do not know the Lord Jesus as the savior of your life, then you cannot continue in this study of priorities in life. Dear brothers and sisters, are you willing to make the Lord Jesus the savior of your life? The Lord Jesus is inviting you this morning. The Lord Jesus is saying, seek ye first the kingdom of God. And he wants you to seek him as the savior of your life. He has shown you that he is the exclusive savior. He has shown you that he is everyone's savior, he can be your savior as well. He is also showing you that he is that effectual savior, he can save anyone, no matter how worse you are, he can save you. But this morning, the most important question is, do you know him as the savior of your life? Are you willing to make the Lord Jesus the savior of your life? If you don't give him that due place as the savior of your life, then life is not worth the living. Dear brother dear sister, are you willing to surrender your life this morning to the Lord Jesus in a new way? For a few moments, we are going to close our eyes. I want every one of you to close your eyes for a moment. And take a look at your own heart and life. Have you given the Lord Jesus the prominent place, the place of priority as the savior of your life? Can you talk of an experience of knowing the Lord Jesus as the one who has forgiven you of all your sins? Yes dear brother dear sister, take a look at your life. Can you truthfully say this morning, Jesus is your savior? If you are not able to say such a thing, then all what you need, all what you need to do this morning is, is to knowledge your sin. You need to accept before the presence of God that you are a sinner. And you need to tell the Lord Jesus, yes, Lord, I repent of my sin. Lord, I have sinned against you and you alone. Lord, I understand that I am a sinner. But Lord Jesus, you are the savior of my soul. So confess your sins to the Lord Jesus. Say, Lord Jesus, I am sorry for all what I have done against you. And ask the Lord Jesus, Lord, please forgive me for all my sins. Lord, you are that effectual savior who can save me from any sin and iniquity in my life. Please cleanse me. Please make me clean with your precious blood. And make me your child. Be the savior of my life, my life. Yes, is there anyone here who is saying such a prayer in your heart this morning? Please do not open your eyes. Please do not look around. Please do not concentrate on anything else. But in your heart, before the Lord, examine your life. Are you able to, in all honesty and truthfulness, say, that you know Jesus as the savior of your life? If you cannot say so, then at this moment, say this simple prayer. Lord Jesus, I am sorry. Lord Jesus, I am sorry. I am a sinner. Cleanse me by thy blood. Forgive me for all what I have committed against you. And come into my heart and life. Be my savior today. Just say such a simple prayer. Is there anyone here who is praying such a prayer? We would like to pray for you. Is there anyone here? If there is anyone here who is praying such a prayer in your heart, who wants to receive the Lord Jesus as your savior, kindly I request of you, when all the eyes are closed, raise your hand and show. Do not be ashamed to do that. Do not think what others may think about you. But if you truly want to know the Lord Jesus as your savior and experience that change in your life, then raise your hand please. You may not get another chance. This may be the last chance. Yes, thank you brother. Yes, is there anyone here? Does anyone else please? Please raise your right hand and show. So that we can pray for you. Is there anyone who is accepting the Lord Jesus as your savior? Yes, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone here among the sisters? Do not forsake the speaking of God. He is pleading with you. He is calling you, my son, my daughter, come to me. My son, my daughter, give me the new place in your life. I am the one who can be the savior of your life. Yes, the Lord Jesus is inviting you. Yes, this is the last call, is there anyone else? Yes, even if you do not raise your hand, in your heart, if you feel convicted, then today speak to one of us. They would like to pray for you personally. They would like to help you. Because this is very important. If you do not know him as savior, then you do not know him at all. And if Jesus is not given that priority of being the savior of your life, then everything else in your life is going to be messed up. Yes, please. Now we are going to close in prayer. My request dear brother to come and close in prayer. And then after the prayer, we will take a short break if possible and then, if there is a possibility, we can relay on another, on the second aspect of the priority of life. Gracious and loving heavenly Father, we thank thee for the exhortation of the precious word. Thanking thee with all the power and authority the word released by word. Thanking thee for the theme which you have given unto us from Matthew six thirty-three. Seek in the kingdom of God. And the word revealed unto us the priorities of our lives. Seven, fours, prayers, supply. First priority in our lives to see the Lord Jesus Christ as a savior. Because he is the exclusive savior. He is everyone's savior. He is an effectual savior. He is an asordar mukti datta.
Oh, dear Lord, we thank thee, we praise and worship thee.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Thanking thee, the word once again, reminding us and begin to speak to us.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Though we may be a believers.
And we are saying, we are saying.
It is important that we must give a priority to thee.
And we are saying, we are saying.
The three generations work, they are connected to keep our hearts, bring a new, new life in our lives.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Our dear brothers who have raised their hands.
And we are saying, we are saying.
And they recompete their lives into thee.
And we are saying, we are saying.
And many may be silently, they have recompeted their life.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Here are the eight of prayers.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Three generations work, we begin in our lives.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Thanking thee for thy servant who has come all the way, who has to reveal unto us the mystery of the six, 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 six.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Thanking thee for sharing and translating thy word.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Thanking thee for enabling us to have us day.
And we are saying, we are saying. And we are saying, we are saying.
To may reveal all your purposes and plans and works.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Thank you Lord for hearing our prayer.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Thank you Lord for your loving presence.
And we are saying, we are saying.
Yeah, for this prayer with thanksgiving in the most highly exalted name, oh, dear Lord, the savior, Jesus Christ.
And we are saying, we are saying.